We will be starting in about two minutes. It is now time for the city council meeting. It is 7:01 and we will begin. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozio.
Here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
All present, ma'am.
At this time, we have a very special pastor here tonight that will give the invocation. Pastor Percy Johnson from New Hope Missionary Baptist Church. Thank you for being here this evening and would you please give the invocation for the city?
Thank you so very much for this opportunity and this privilege to invite God's presence into our midst. So as we prepare our hearts and minds for prayer, just to pass in thought, it says, "Words are free, but it's how we choose to use them that may cost us." Words are free, but it's how we choose to use them that may cost us. Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we come before your presence, just recognizing how awesome you are. We come before your presence this night, inviting you into this Waukegan City Council meeting. We realize that many might not believe this, but the word that I read says, "We can't do anything without you." So I invite your very presence into our midst. Pray that every decision that's made, that it would be for the betterment, not only of our community of Waukegan, but also for every constituent here in Waukegan. Let it be known that this city loves its people. Now, Lord, lead us tonight as we gather together in this room. Bless this assembly, bless every elected official, every staffer, every person present here, bless them. And then, Lord, keep us safe during this Thanksgiving week. Keep us safe and sound, keep us healthy. We love you, Lord, can't do without you, need you in this meeting tonight, and we thank you now for this opportunity and it's in his name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Johnson. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and infinite.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being at our November 21 city council meeting. Hard to believe, but it's already the week of Thanksgiving and we're quickly coming to the end of the year. Again, for all of those, for all of you out there who are watching from home, you can get the city agenda the Friday before the meeting and you can do that by going to our website and going to the agendas. I want to take a moment and talk about the violence that we saw at the cemetery this last week. As many of you know, Waukegan suffered a disgusting instance of hate. Last week, hateful and anti-Semitic graffiti were discovered on more than three dozen headstones in our Jewish cemetery. I'm deeply saddened and angered by this. My heart aches for the families who have buried their relatives in that cemetery and to see their headstones defaced. Cemeteries are sacred places. Everyone deserves respect and dignity in death and unfortunately, whoever did this crime, this hateful act violated the memories of those, for those people for the rest of their lives, for the family's lives. While this disgusting news received widespread attention, I want to reassure everyone in this community that this does not represent Waukegan. We are a community that embraces our differences and finds strength in our diversity. We do not stand for hate. I'd like to thank our city public works department who quickly stepped in to help clean the grave sites and to ensure all the residents that they feel safe, welcome, and respected in our community because that's what Waukegan is about. The Waukegan Police Department continues to investigate this incident. If you have information, please contact the Waukegan PD Criminal Investigations Division tip line at 847-360-9001 or Crime Stoppers at 847-662-2222. This brings me to another incident this weekend. Unfortunately, we witnessed another grievance, or grievous act of hate in our country over the weekend in Colorado Springs when a gunman committed a mass shooting at an LGBTQ+ club. This shooting may have happened 1,000 miles away, but it was still an attack on our LGBTQ neighbors. Clubs have long been a place of refuge for the LGBTQ community, offering a place where they can escape the judgment and hate that faces them in the outside world. This shooting was a cowardly act of hate towards the LGBTQ communities where everyone and yet another example of the gun violence that impacts our cities across this country. I want the Waukegan LGBT community to know that we see you, we respect you, and we extend our collective love to you in these frightening times. Our hearts go out to those that were affected by this tragedy and to the LGBT community who are mourning. Again, these are two tragic instances of hate, but I'm telling you, the love that has come out of these instances is also remarkable and during this Thanksgiving, I want us to remember that. Some general things going on in the city. I want to congratulate Waukegan's High School JROTC Raiders who competed for the first time in the Raiders National Competition. The Raiders National is a JROTC competition that showcases many of the hardworking Army JOTC Raider teams in the nation and I'm so proud that our local team ranked in the top 25 nationally. Mark your calendars. I'm excited that the Chris Kringle Market is back for the second year. It'll be open from noon to 6 on Saturday, December 3 at the Carter 405 Gallery, 405 Washington Street. Come ring in the holiday season and support our local artists and shop local in Waukegan. If you stop by the Chris Kringle Market, be sure to stick around for the Waukegan Main Street Holiday Tree Lighting. It'll also be on December 3 and will feature both the Cookman Choir and the Waukegan Public Schools Mariachi Band. The fun starts with the Park District's Winter Wonder Walk at 4:00 PM and carries on until the tree is lit at 5:00 PM. If you're a senior citizen who would like to lower your insurance costs, consider taking the AARP Safe Drivers Course at the Waukegan Township Patricia A. Jones Center. This program could help you lower your bills. For more information and to register, seniors may contact the center at 847-244-9242. If you're having difficulty affording all your expenses this holiday season, you still have time to sign up to receive Toys from the Family First Toys for Tots. Registration is open through December 2 at thefamilyfirst.org. In addition, the center is hosting Toys for Tots Document Verification Events at Waukegan Public Library Monday through Wednesday of next week and November 28 through 30 from 5:00 PM to 6:45. It's also that time of year to enjoy some favorite holiday music and shows and discover new ones. The Genesee Theater, Three Brothers Theater, and Waukegan High School have holiday shows and concerts starting Friday, December 2 and a number of other holiday celebrations are scheduled throughout the month, so please check our city website at waukeganil.gov for information on all of them. Last, I want to talk a little bit about the holidays, that while the holidays are always a festive time, there are many people who also suffer from depression during this time. Please, take some time to understand that this is not a wonderful time for everyone. So please reach out to your neighbors, your friends, your family. Check on them, ask how they're doing. Make sure that our children are protected during this time, that we understand and reach out to them. How are they feeling during this time? Again, the holidays are a wonderful time to celebrate. It's a wonderful family time. Not everyone has a family and not everyone feels the same way during the holiday season. So please, again, this is our time to love each other. This is what the holidays are about. And again, that's all the comments I have, but thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, ma'am. We have resolutions, proclamation, presentation, and appointments, and the first one that we have is the Extra Mile Award that I believe you are going to be presenting.
I will be. At this time, I would like to bring up Josephine Banks. Come on. She seems a little stunned by this. Come on up.
Come on.
That would be Queen Josephine.
We won't embarrass you. This isn't an episode of This Is Your Life. Come on up with her or you want to take pictures, okay. Josephine, this is the Extra Mile Award from Waukegan. And in recognition of your community efforts, especially working with our youth and beyond through fashion and sewing classes over the years at BAM, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind, we are presenting you this award for going the extra mile and being a community leader. Thank you for everything you do and on behalf of the city, we want to take this time to recognize you and thank you.
Surprise.
I'm going to give you this and you can hold it up for the cameras.
Was this a surprise?
Yeah, it is a surprise.
Okay.
She didn't know. And everybody is here.
She looks scared to death.
Yes. Everybody that's here for the second part of that will be doing audience time, so please stick around.
Thank you so much for everything you do. Alderman, can we get a picture? As soon as you're done, we'll take a picture. Thank you. Okay, we're all looking right here. One more. Thank you.
The next proclamation is November is Diabetes Awareness Month. Whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention estimate 37.3 million adults and children in the United States have diabetes and an estimated 96 million adults have pre-diabetes. And if this trend continues, one in three Americans born after 2000 will have diabetes, with an even higher risk for minorities. And whereas diabetes is a devastating disease of which type 2 accounts for 90% of all diabetes diagnosis and can be prevented or delayed by staying at a healthy weight, eating well, and being active. And whereas uncontrolled diabetes puts people at risk for serious complications including kidney disease, nerve damage, cardiovascular disease, blindness, and amputation. And whereas the American Diabetes Association estimates the total cost of diagnosed diabetes have risen to $327 billion, which includes $237 billion in direct medical costs and $90 billion in reduced productivity, a figure that has risen 26% over a five-year period. And whereas, learning how to manage, how to self-manage this condition through education and support is the foundation of treatment. And whereas awareness of the warning signs of type 1 diabetes is critical to preventing deaths in misdiagnosed children, and now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and the members of city council do hereby proclaim November Diabetes Awareness Month and urge all citizens to help fight this disease and its deadly complications by increasing awareness of its risk factors, by making healthy lifestyle choices, by understanding the warning signs in children, and by providing support for those affected by the disease. Adopted this 21st day of November 2022. Our second proclamation is November is Native American Heritage Month. Whereas Native American Heritage Month is observed by honoring the cultures, traditions, and contributions of Native Americans long before the formation of the United States, those that shaped our country and are woven into its history. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by President George H.W. Bush in 1990, designating the month of November as National American Heritage Month. And whereas all indigenous people are respected and celebrated as part of Waukegan's history, land that was inhabited by the Potawatomi known as the Fire Keepers, among other Native Americans, knowing our city started as the Potawatomi Settlement and French trading post known as Little Fort. And whereas, Waukegan also acknowledges our nation's history of colonialism that inflicted discrimination and deprivation on indigenous people. And we seek to increase our recognition of important ongoing contributions that Native Americans make in our community, the state, and across the country. And whereas, in celebrating the traditions, cultures, and accomplishments of Native Americans, we are aware of the historical importance of local and national tribes, the way Native Americans continue to enrich our heritage and add to all aspects of our society by sharing their customs and traditions. And whereas, we honor our native people, their ancestral homes, their religion, and recognize their contributions historically, currently, and in the future to our city. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of city council do hereby proclaim November Native American Heritage Month in Waukegan and urge our citizens to celebrate the diverse and rich cultures of indigenous people, honor their sacrifices, acknowledge the unique challenges they face, and recognize their continued significance in our community and across the country. Adopted this 21st day of November 2022. And that, that is the end. And now you have CLC.
Yes. CLC wanted to give a short little description of what's going on at the college, so please come on up.
Good evening. Thank you Mayor Taylor. Thank you members of city council for having us here tonight. My name is Eliza Fornia. I'm here representing College of Lake County along with the president of College of Lake County, Dr. Lori Sutick, and the dean of...
Stand up. Come on, stand up so they know who you are.
And fantastic. And the dean of Lake Shore Campus, Dean Ruiz. He's here. We have all noticed some pretty exciting developments happening at the Lake Shore Campus and we wanted, we'll be back to invite everyone to the grand opening of the new student center at the Lake Shore Campus, but wanted to put a, this is serving as a save the date, January 13, 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM. This is a free, open-to-the-public event to showcase the new building, but in addition to showcasing not only the new building, we want to showcase the citizens of Waukegan and North Chicago and all along the lake shore here by inviting people to come and show their small business, whether you want to bring a food item, cater the event, or showcase the art, the performance art that you've been working on. We'd like to, we have applications that are available now. We wanted to do this earlier so people would have a chance to apply. These are due December 2. So Jane Ferry has some copies of the application. All of the aldermen perhaps got electronic versions of the application? Fantastic. There are QR codes on there that you can apply on either side. The idea is that will, the performers will be on the second floor, which as many of the aldermen have seen, is a second, a two-story window opening to the, to the great view of the lake and it'll be a spectacular event and we're just hoping for no polar vortexes. So Mayor Taylor, if you can help us out with that. January 13, we need good weather. That is all. Thank you.
It's not Friday the 13th, though, right?
It is Friday the 13th. You know it is.
Oops. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to have, before we start audience time, I will have our attorney read the rules of decorum.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. Kelly Ganderzki Corporation Council. The rules of decorum are outlined in the Waukegan Municipal Code specifically under Article 2, Division 2, Dash 65.1, Rules of Decorum at City Council Meetings. The presiding officer shall conduct city council meetings in an orderly manner. No person in the audience shall engage in disorderly conduct, including any act that disturbs, disrupts, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting or the presentation of any speaker. During the public comment portion of the city council meetings, if any, all public comments are limited to three minutes per individual. Individuals are directed to be brief and concise in making their remarks and to address topics directly relevant to the business of city council. The presiding officer, after one warning, may rule any individual addressing the council out of order if the individual, one, becomes repetitive, two, exceeds the three-minute limitation, three, makes personal attacks against others, four, makes rude or slanderous remarks, five, becomes threatening or boisterous, six, engages in electioneering for candidates, or seven, otherwise interferes with the orderly and dignified conduct of the meeting. If ruled out of order and is found by the chair to be out of order, the individual may be barred from further remarks at the city council meeting and barred from future, barred from further attendance at that meeting. The ruling of this chair can be overridden by a two-thirds vote of the alderman present. Nothing herein is intended to limit or restrain negative, positive, or neutral comments about the manner in which an individual employee, officer, official, or council member carries out his or her duties in public office or public employment of the city.
Thank you. Thank you Ms. Ganderzki. We're going to go ahead, I'm going to name the first three people. Go ahead to the east side of the room and the first one I have is Brother Blanks, Calvin Mathis, and Andrea Moore. Brother Blanks, Calvin Mathis, and Andrea Moore, and you start talking and I'll hit the timer.
Brother Blanks, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. Right now, I just want to take this time, Queen Josephine Morgan, yeah, I'm talking about Josephine Blanks, can you come up, please? I saw your son sitting back there, I thought about that. Our sons, family. Everybody, right now, I just want to take time to further recognize you because for over two decades, over two decades, you have stood by my side, worked in our communities, in a community on the south side where many won't even drive through, let alone walk through. Not only that, you've worked with some of our youth where many, in many cases, are even afraid to come and deal with. You've done that with me without any state, federal, local grants for over these years because of your commitment to the community and will hope and thank for your love for me as well. And over those decades, after doing all this work, you was courageous enough and crazy enough to marry the man in the movement. But with that being said, I have this additional award, Brother Calvin. Also, y'all, these coats that you see me wearing, this brother here is wearing and what she's wearing, this is some of her work of art. This is her. And this is the work she worked with us on, in the first ward, working with our youth, giving them an opportunity through her skills and her talents and her love for the community and for her people. And I appreciate that and I appreciate this opportunity for you all to let us recognize her in such a way. So can you give me that, my brother? Can you take that? This is an obelisk award. An obelisk is a recognition and it stands for resurrection and new beginnings. And over the years, I've watched you resurrect yourself. Thank you. I've watched you resurrect yourself and reinvent yourself to be the talented, creative, creative, and loving spirit that you are and the work that you provide in many of our commu, in our community. Sometime our kids just need a hug, so I thank you for being there to give me that balance of what I do for our community and our youth, but also bringing that balance of love and energy that our children need to have. You provide that atmosphere and so I thank you. I love you for that and I know our community through Black Abolition Movement for the Mind love you just the same for all that you do. So as a founder of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind, I thank you for the work that you do standing by my side and your commitment to our youth and our community and the people. Thank you. Can we get some pictures? Can I get a picture right quick, guys, if you don't mind? Yes. Okay, you want to stay up? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I thank you, thank everyone, thank everyone, all of you that came out for me tonight is a genuine surprise, especially my two sons.
I'm sorry, but we have to, we have three minutes. Three minutes has passed.
Thank you, everyone, and it's through God's grace that I'm able to do and that I do what I do and it's through my heart and God's grace. Thank you.
I'll tell you what. Go ahead.
Again, I'm just going to let you continue with my...
That's okay. Thank you so much.
You'll yield the time.
Yeah. I'll yield my time to you. Go ahead.
I just wanted to continue to say thank everyone for even trusting our center with their children and everything that we do because it's through the love of God that we want to share and boost the community up and build up our children, our youth, for the future so we won't have so many hate acts in the world and starting with our community. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Oh, you wanted them to come up?
Well, I just wanted them to stand up. I know my sons work very hard, they're frontline workers and they came from Chicago to be here with me.
Y'all take a stand. Some of our extended family here.
I yield my time to her and...
Mr. Mathis, we had you give up your time for her.
Yes, I did. That's what I was, I think this mic is off, by the way. No, I did, I yield my time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, that's like husband of the year, isn't it? Well, that's like husband of the year, isn't it?
Hello, Council. Hello. My name is Andrea. I am a student so far, just beginning with Sister Josephine. I'm learning how to sew. It's fun. Please join, you know, get the little ones out there, support. In other news, I am still trying to advocate with residents with Waukegan Housing Authority. For those who don't know, I was evicted. Retaliatory is my allegation because I have been trying to advocate. Recently, I was arrested from the armed terrorist property for criminal trespass. Again, I was utilizing or acting under a HUD form, which is a supplemental contact, something that had been in the residence file since November. And the new property manager under Evergreen Management initiated a call to the police under emergency circumstances, even though five days prior, I had been on the, in the office, but with her, have a recording over an hour. I have court on December 6th. I'll tell you how that goes if I'm free still after that. Also, just trying to get persons to understand that a lot of what's happening with the South Side revitalization plan doesn't seem to actually include those who are established or are connected. If I had to guess, it seems like there's a little bit of gentrification happening. I hope that's not the case. And if anybody has interest in helping someone like myself, who is pretty solo right now, just trying to re-regulation and implement reasonable actions, complaints, public comments, things of that nature, I'd appreciate it, and so will many of the disregarded citizens of Waukegan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrea. The next three will be Clyde McLemore, Rayon Edwards, and Margaret Carrasco. Clyde McLemore, Rayon Edwards, and Margaret Carrasco.
It was brought, testing, testing.
Can y'all hear me?
Yep, we can.
I can't hear it.
Testing.
Yeah, you've got to come closer.
It was brought to my attention that the city of Waukegan is going to donate an old fire truck to the city in the country of Mexico. If so, that's fine. But I'm always taught, you take care of home first. I am sure a rural area in this country could use a fire truck. However, as a leader and a resident in Lake County, I have many questions. First, was this donation council approved? If so, was it approved on the council floor? When was it approved on the council floor? What is the liability of this to the city of Waukegan? Will Waukegan be liable free if this donation is approved? Third, Mayor, is this city going through the Council General of Mexico in Chicago? What if the truck get there and there's a fire and, and they point the hose and no water come out? Will Waukegan be held responsible? Has the truck passed international safety requirements? Alderman Seager, Bolton, Mozio, Kirkwood, and Newsom, did you know about this? I am sure Hayes and Florin and Rivera and Turner knew. Are you donating the truck thinking it would bring you Mexican community votes? You really think Margaret could get you some votes? The Mexican community doesn't trust Margaret. They haven't forgot how the Attorney General Lisa Manikin had to bring charges against her on January 18th, 2013 for consumer fraud and dispect, and deceptive practice, which still today, she still hasn't paid restitution, which she was fined for. In my opinion, she need to be in jail for deceiving the Mexican community. It appears to me that the Latino, Latino community has lost trust in her for those deceptive practices. But I get it, Mayor, that's the damn barely politics you brought it to Waukegan, and you going to donate her a fire truck for Mexico just for politics. Mayor, I have some Arab people in Pakistan who can use their AMI lamps since you donating, donate, in the donating business to other countries.
Thank you, sir. Rayon Edwards.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen and Women, as well as the people of this community. Tonight, before I start speaking, I want to give a special thank you to Alderman Mozio, Alderman Rivera, Alderman Florin, and Alderman Thomas Hayes for you guys' contribution to the Halloween event. It was amazing. It really was. And a huge, huge shout out to you, Mr. Hayes. So many of the parents were surprised that you brought your daughter there, and I encourage you guys to do that more. When you run for these city positions, you become a part of this community. And so when you don't bring your kids around to engage, and you don't come around and engage, then we don't see you as part of this community, right? We have a Christmas Eve going on December 17th, 2022, at the Boys and Girls Club of Lake County, and I'm hoping at this event, I can see the First Ward Alderman there since it's been held in your, in your community, your ward. Respectfully, Mayor, I wanted to comment on something that you said, that the LGBTQ community is being heard and seen, but we're not. We're not. We are disrespected a lot by people that come up here and do business with you guys. You know, I don't know what y'all seeing or where y'all living at, but ain't nothing changed. It's still going on. Tonight, I see Senator Johnson is in the audience in support for the award tonight, and that's amazing, and it's beautiful. But I have to say this publicly, when we was going through that with the towers, over 300-some people in that building, they needed all the support. Now, I didn't see this many people in the room, and I'm disappointed because every politician should have been here to speak for those people down at the towers. I did a live, and that live got over 15,000 views, and so everybody seen it. And I, I, I just think we got to do better. I appreciate how the city, how we recognize so many, but we still missing, and we're dropping the ball, y'all, because I haven't seen not too many kids up here yet being recognized. We got 27 schools in Waukegan. We got over 4,000 high schoolers. We just did a mental health thing. Them babies got down. They drew some beautiful artwork. We giving $1,000 tomorrow to them, and ain't nobody giving us. This is money we're scraping up, making it happen. We sitting with a lot of checkbooks. Remember, the kids are the future. We need to start acting like that. We need to start promoting them. We need to start motivating them, and we need to start saying that to them. Because when they don't hear from the people that's in the office, and when the people of their community don't support them, they figure, why do anything? Remember, the streets is free. Don't cost nothing.
Thank you, sir. Margaret Carrasco.
First of all, I just want to commend and congratulate Josephine Blanks. She's always respectful woman, beautiful, natural woman, and so talented. So you deserve it, and thank you so much for everything you've done for many, many years. Okay, so let me begin tonight. I just wanted to share and, an upcoming historic event, a win-win for, 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 for everyone, I believe. First of all, a win for Waukegan residents because maybe many of you do not, are not aware that the city of Waukegan is getting a new fire truck with all the most modern bells and whistles on December 15th. It's being replaced. The council approved the purchase of the new fire truck. And this, then, yippee, because the new truck, the, the old truck that's being replaced, okay, is going to a poor community in Waukegan from Tonatiko, Mexico. 90% of Waukegan Latino residents are from Tonatiko, for those that don't know. I personally been down there. And I brought a picture of the truck, the old truck, the one that's being replaced. It looks beautiful. It looks brand new, but it's not. How does all begin? So let me just, and this is so important. It didn't start with Ann Taylor. It all started with the previous administration. You can check the minutes. You can check all the pictures also. I believe Dave Motley could probably perhaps can recall, maybe Jane Ferry. The previous administration, administration, the mayor, Sam Cunningham, promised a fire truck to this community when he was mayor. The mayor of that town, President Dante, even came up here to get the keys for the truck. But to his surprise, he was told when he came here, oh, you know what? Sorry, I'm not going to give it to you anymore. That's wrong. So I want to tonight personally commend Mayor Ann Taylor for being the first mayor to do and come through for this promise to this, this community. I believe it's the right thing to do, and I want to invite the community on December 3rd to come and be a witness to when this used fire truck, that would have been scrapped, what a waste, will now continue to save lives in Tonatiko, Mexico. And the Latino community is very thankful for your decision and your support, and the Fire Department, thank you very much. It's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes the audience time, ma'am. Actually, before we go on, Chief Paser, would you like to come up and talk about the truck a little bit? I'm asking Chief to talk about it because this is not a truck that is in good shape, is it?
Thank you for having me, Mayor and Council Members. The fire truck, it's actually a ladder truck that will be donated, is a 1995 Seagrave. It's been in reserve status for probably about 10 or 12 years now. When we purchased a new ladder truck, it was delivered in 2020. This went even farther in reserve. It was supposed to be donated probably six months ago, maybe, Margaret. But we had one of our engines that broke down, and we needed this to move up the pecking order in the reserve status. That engine was fixed, and now we are back to the donation standpoint again. I guess to answer Clyde's question, has it been approved yet? It's sitting with the city attorneys right now to be drafted and will be on, at the next council to be approved. It's a win-win for everybody. This is not a vehicle that can be sold because it cannot pass any NFPA standards anymore. It's past its useful life. Useful life is 20 years. It's not safe for us to use, but luckily, a city in Mexico is able to take possession of it, and it is a win for them because I believe, as Margaret told me, they don't have any fire engines down there at all. They don't have one. So this is going to be their first one. So again, it's, it's a win-win for everybody. The city, we need to get rid of it because it, it's not up to standards, so it's great that we're able to donate it.
And if I'm not mistaken, doesn't it have to go on a flatbed truck?
It does. It doesn't run. So, yes. So it's going to go straight from Station 2, where it's being housed, straight onto a flatbed truck right now. So, yes. Any other ques, any other questions?
Um, the other thing he brought up was liability. Is there any liability on our part if the truck is
So corporate counsel is writing something up, and it will be turnkey operation, meaning as soon as we give the keys over to Margaret or whoever is going to take possession of it, then it is ultimately their responsibility. There will be a zero bill of sale, as well as all the paperwork that goes along that they take over responsibility for it. It'll all be done at the same time. Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief. Okay, with audience time being over, I'm sorry, with audience time being over, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody would like me to pull? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion.
Second.
Okay. Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Turner. Item A, a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, November 7th, 2022. Item B, a motion to approve vendor payments dated November 21st, 2022, in the amount of $2,080,700, I'm sorry, $2,087,61. Item C, a motion to approve the 2023 city council, or city council meeting schedule. Item D, an ordinance to approve the zoning calendar number 2675, a conditional use permit for the private school at 1300 West 10th Street. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on November 7th, 2022. Item E, an ordinance to approve the zoning calendar number 2679, a tax amendment to the Waukegan zoning ordinance regarding the definition of a contractor's yard in Section 13.2. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on November 7th, 2022. Item F, an ordinance to approve zoning calendar 2681, a tax amendment to Section 3.4 Development Review Board, 8.4 B3-dash General Commercial District, and Article 13, Rules and Definitions. Number one, to allow an automobile accessory stores. Two, garages for storage, repair, servicing of motor vehicles. And three, garages including motor vehicle body repair, painting, and engine rebuilding as permitted uses in the B3 General Commercial District subject to review and conditions set by the Development Review Board. And two, to allow, one, garages for storage, repair, servicing of motor vehicles under 7,500 square feet, and two, garages including motor vehicles, body repair, painting, and engine rebuilding under 7,500 square feet as conditional uses in the B3 General Commercial District. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on November 7th, 2022. Item G, motion to approve the regular payroll dated November 18th, 2022, in a total amount of $1,660,297.55. Item H, a motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, PBLC holiday payback, comp time cash out, elected officials in civil service stipend, manual checks, and final payout dated November 18th, 2022, in the total amount of $38,240.58. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Florin.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no reports or communication, our all business, we'll go on to new business. I will ask for an omnibus, but first, I want to pull items A, B, C, D, and item M was being held over. Okay, and what ones? N? Okay. And O?
Excuse me, Mayor. Excuse me, Mayor.
So the, yes.
Also, could you pull N?
N?
Yes.
Okay. So you're pulling N, you said, as a Nancy, M? Okay, Nancy, okay. Okay.
Mayor, could you read those over again that we're pulling?
Sure. The ones that would be pulled off of there would be A, B, C, D. M is in Mary, is being held over. And then Alderman Bolton wants to hold over N, is in Nancy.
She say, hold it over or just pull it out?
I'm sorry, not hold it over, to pull it out.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so can I have a motion to omnibus?
I'd like to make a motion to omnibus.
I'll second.
Okay. Alderman Turner and Alderman Rivera. Okay. Starting off with item E, a resolution authorizing the proper city officials to submit an application to the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency for the lead service line inventory grant program for the maximum amount of $50,000. This amount was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on November 21st, 2022. Item F, a resolution authorizing the proper city officials to submit an application to the Lake County Fiscal Year 23 Watershed Management Board and Development of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, Round 3, for the Montesano Avenue Flooding Migration Project in the 7th Ward. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on November 21st, 2022. Item G, a resolution authorizing the proper city officials to submit an application to the to submit an application to the Lake County Fiscal Year 23 Watershed Management Board and Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, Round 3, for the Yeoman Creek Flooding Migration Project near Sunset Avenue and Lewis Avenue. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on November 21st, 2022. Item H, a resolution authorizing the proper city officials to waive the competitive bidding process, authorizing the purchase of firefighter turnout gear from Dinjus Fire Company. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on November 21st, 2022. Item I, a resolution authorizing the IT Department to purchase ARC GIS Enterprise Geospatial Platform for Environmental Systems Research Institute, Incorporated, in a not-to-exceed amount of $50,456 as outlined in the City of Waukegan Municipal Code, Section 2-454. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on November 21st, 2022. Item J, a resolution authorizing the proper city officials to approve a 60-month fiber optic service contract with Comcast Business Computer in a not-to-exceed amount of $760,000. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on November 21st, 2022. Item K, a resolution authorizing the proper city officials to extend purchase authorization for computers, maintenance, and professional services for cybernetics for a not-to-exceed amount of $370,000. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on November 21st, 2022. Item L, a resolution authorizing the proper city officials to approve the purchases by the city for additional equipment and services from Pentagram Systems LLC on an as-need basis for the up-to-total amount of $220,000 during the 2223 fiscal year. This matter was presented at the Finance and Purchasing Committee on November 21st, 2022. Item O, an ordinance amending the sign ordinance for casino signs. This matter was presented to the Code Revisions, Appeals, and Negotiations Committee on November 21st, 2022. And Item P, a resolution waiving competitive bidding and approving a contract with Maple Valley Construction for emergency repairs to Fire Station Number 2. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on November 21st, 2022. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio. Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item A, can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Alderman Turner, a second. Alderman Mozio. Any questions to this motion? Alderman Florian?
Yeah, I just, I spoke with Alderman Seager. This is in his ward, right near the neighborhood I grew up in, actually. I'd just like some clarification, maybe from Noel or Thomas, whoever. We haven't had this kind of a license before, if I'm correct, for a gas station-type facility. And I just want to hear their perspective on changing this or opening this up, if you will.
Hi, good evening. This is a new separate business. It's not included with the gas station.
But it's on the same property.
It didn't say, it's like Plaza. We have one side on an ice cream shop, one is a gas station, and the next one would be the liquor store.
Okay, I'd still like to hear from them.
My understanding was, as the applicant stated, that it's a separate space on the same property as a gas station, but it's set up more like a strip mall, that it's three separate units within the same building on the same property. So it would operate as a separate business on the same property. So it wouldn't be a gas station having a liquor license. It just happens to be co-located on a property with a gas station.
So before, we've only allowed gas stations to have beer and wine? Is that right?
With the exception of those gas stations that were grandfathered in, and I think those are few and far between.
It's five.
Yeah, it's a short, it's a small mountain. I know that that discussion had revolved around things such as not wanting to see the mini liquor bottles at gas stations, the giving the ambiance of connecting businesses that are, you know, driving-oriented with obviously alcohol consumption. So I know that those were two of the previous discussions related to that. You know, obviously, then also agreed to Noel's point of the co-location.
We can't forbid them from having the little bottles, right? Like, once we give them the license, they can buy whatever liquor they want, right?
The category of allowing liquor sale, hard alcohol, does not describe or limit the size of the containers, I believe.
Are there, so now other, once, if we pass this, then other gas stations will be able to apply for the same license?
It's not a gas station.
No? Okay. I just want clarification.
It's a separate storefront in the same strip mall. So it's not the gas station. So there's one PIN number or one property, but it's basically the same as a strip mall where there are three separate units in the building. So it happens that this is one unit on one end, and a gas station convenience store is on the other end, but it's not the gas station getting the license. So I don't believe that it sets any precedent to allow any gas stations to have licenses. I defer to legal for the hard opinion on it, but that would be my observation.
No, it doesn't sound like it's different ownership. It's different parcels of, or is it the same owner?
Same owner, he said.
Same owner, but it's different businesses, correct? Different?
No.
You are not the owner of the gas station.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Plenty of strip malls with liquor stores in them.
I agree.
So I'm sorry, we weren't on the mic, but the applicant for the liquor license confirmed that he is not the owner of the gas station. Separate parties.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Any other questions to the motion? Any other questions? Okay. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Or, I'm sorry, I got a motion on that one, didn't I?
Turner and Mozio.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsome.
Nay.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item B, can I have a motion to this?
No move.
Second.
Okay, Mozio and Turner. Okay. Questions or comments to the motion? Yes, okay, I'm sorry, Legal's going to give a comment first.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council, Kelly Gandersky Corporation Council. I want to note for the council something that's really important from a legal perspective. Should Item B, the tax amendment, be voted down, then the accompanying item, which is the conditional use permit, which is Item C, would become illegal. So these two really travel together, and I want the council to be aware of that because you can't have the conditional use for that type of use if the tax amendment is not passed. So. That, this is Section, Item B.
Yeah, Item B.
It's allowing, so the tax amendment changes the definition section under the zoning ordinance to allow for what's called a multipurpose entertainment establishment. So if that item is not passed, which it wasn't passed in committee.
What does this pertain to, I guess?
This pertains to a use that was requested by, I believe it's, the business is called, is it Yorkies? Yes, Yorkies. They're operating kind of outside, well, they're seeking to operate in a way that's not currently defined in the code. And so they would need a tax amendment to operate. So we would need a definition for them to operate.
Is this in your ward, Alderman Florian?
Yes, it is.
So.
Now I know what you're talking about.
Yes.
It's on the same property as the assisted living we approved.
So however.
An address on here, and that's why, at least in the agenda, so.
So however the council chooses to vote, I just want to make it clear that if B does not pass, passing Item C could create an illegal situation. So I just wanted to make that clear.
So this will include liquor?
Is there a liquor license in that, Noel?
They already have a liquor license, I think.
I believe they already have a liquor license.
Good evening again. So they are two separate issues. Item B on new business is the tax amendment. So that's a change to the language of the zoning ordinance that would not be tied to any particular address. It would just add to the list of conditional uses in the B-3 General Commercial District, the multipurpose entertainment establishment. The definition of multipurpose entertainment establishment says that it can be with or without a liquor license. So somebody could apply for and get a liquor license. In the case of Item C, which is the conditional use permit that runs parallel, that requires the approval of the tax amendment in order to get approved itself, that operation already has a liquor license. So I believe that they could use their existing liquor license within this space on the property.
Is this, I guess it does a little bit, adhering to other businesses that want to maybe not do something, maybe be similar but not in the same area?
It would open up all of the B-3 general commercial districts to this type of use as a conditional use permit. And because of that, if the tax amendment were to pass, but the conditional use permit were to fail, I would request that one of you on the prevailing side raise it again to revote on the tax amendment because I don't think that we should have that out there if we're not doing it for a particular use. We don't have the ability to not accept an application from somebody, but I think it opens the door too far on the business district, on the B-3 district, particularly while we're right in the middle of the development of our unified development ordinance, where we're rewriting the zoning code. And we're going to collapse 360-some uses into fewer than 100. So it just complicates that process.
You know me, I just don't want to, I don't want to stifle business. I get this is bad, though. The address is bad on this one. The concept maybe not.
Yeah, so my comment isn't related to the address. It's just related to the tax amendment. If there isn't a reason to pass the tax amendment, then let's not pass it and complicate the other process that we're going through. Did that answer your original question, though?
Somewhat.
What else can I answer for you?
Yeah, that's good. You're fine.
Okay.
I have been to the planning and zoning meeting where this was discussed and voted down. It was originally presented as a nightclub. Then they brought it back as this community, or I mean, the multipurpose thing. Then it was voted down in planning and zoning, but still came to us anyway. We've had residents come and beg us not to do this. There's homes within shouting distance of this place.
Florian, I get it. You don't have to.
Okay.
It's for everyone else. Yeah.
Okay, any other further questions or comments to the motion? Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Hayes.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
No.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsome.
Nay.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Okay.
Failed.
Item C.
I should go forward, but understanding that.
I'll let you explain to the Alderman how.
So now that the tax amendment was not approved, there's no legal way in the code for this business to operate the way that it's proposing under Item C. So I just want to advise the council of that.
So they would, that would mean it would have to be a no vote?
Staff has proposed a negative recommendation in the memo.
So can we just vote?
This says ordinance to approve, so you need to redo the motion.
Yeah, it says it's a motion to approve, so we want an ordinance to deny, correct?
Just leave it as.
Oh, no, just leave it as, and make it a no vote then, yeah.
Just call it and don't get a second.
Is everybody clear what they're voting on here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Could you repeat, can you repeat it, please? What are we voting on?
Okay.
So Item B, the tax amendment, that would allow that type of use, has failed. So if they were, if you voted, if the council voted yes to this item, then there's no legal way for them to operate. So they traveled together. So to vote yes would create an illegal operation.
Will we just call for a motion and not a sec, don't get a second on it, or die for no second?
Just vote it, just vote it.
It's got to be voted on. So.
All right, okay, let's take a vote.
Madam Clerk, did I get a motion? Okay, can I have a motion on Item C?
I'll motion.
Alderman Rivera, a second.
I'll second.
Alderman Florian. Okay.
That you can, yep.
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Hayes.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
So I understand the other one failed, so obviously it's no.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
No.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsome.
Nay.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Motion failed, ma'am. Thank you. Item D, this has to be voted on separately because it is part of the tax levy, so it can't be an omnibus. Can I have a motion for Alderman Newsome? Is the first a second? I need a second for Alderman Seager. Okay, Item D, a determination of proposed aggregate tax levy for tax year 2022 in the amount of $33,288,799. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on November 21st, 2022. So it is a 0% in the tax levy. This was all presented in committee. Is everybody clear on this? Okay.
Is that saying that this is a 0% property tax increase?
Yes, it is, no tax turner.
No tax turner to.
Make sure you preface that for the last seven out of nine years.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Yes. Which, at some point, I do want residents to understand that as things are increasing in pricing, meaning our insurance benefit costs are going up over 9%, projects are coming in anywhere from 25% to 50% higher than what some of the projects were anticipated, it will restrict some of the things that we can do. It has to because, you know, there's going to be limited money. But we feel at this point in time, this is best for the residents of Waukegan.
I just want to say, if anybody, this is for the public out there, watch the presentation that Mr. Schultz gave during the committee. It was very informative, very easy to follow. Property taxes are not easy to follow at times. Property taxes are not easy to follow at times. And I was telling him, I remember the very first meeting I had with him 20 years ago, and he started off by saying, "Mom and pop shows, shops, are what keep Waukegan going. That's why maybe me and Alderman Turner hammers so much about being business friendly. That's what keep us going. Not the big boxes, but the mom and pops. That's what keep us going." He told me that 20 years ago and it's still true today. That's why I'm always adamant about being business friendly. Thank you.
So Mayor, excuse me, just another point of clarification for the benefit of our public, and that is that property tax bill may increase, but just to be clear, will not be increasing as a result of the vote by the city council.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic, I'll clear, please?
Yeah, thank you, Alderman Bolton. Waukegan, Waukegan City's portion of the property taxes that are collected by the county are not increasing, but other taxing bodies may increase their tax and cause, and you'll see an increase in your property tax, but not from Waukegan. So we have to make that distinction.
But also it depends on the value of your house.
Yeah, it's complicated, but I just want to make sure that we're clear. Waukegan City, the city of Waukegan is not raising property taxes. That's my point.
If you're asking for the same dollar amount we asked last year.
That's right. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks.
Okay, roll call please.
I have a question. So Mayor, you had mentioned, it benefits our citizen. Can you reiterate how that is executed? How will it benefits?
Well, it obviously doesn't make it so that we're taking in more money. We're helping the residents by not raising their taxes.
Right.
So-
Are we asking for any more money?
No, we're not asking for any more money. Now, again, what Alderman Turner brought up is that, you know, there's other taxing bodies. There's your township, there's your county, there's-
Park District, School Board.
Park District, there's Umtown, your school district, which is one of the biggest ones that you contribute to. What they are raising, they will come out with on their own, but it has, we've made that decision on our own. Yes.
Your Honor, Don, if you could, the example you gave us is just the percentage breakdown in Waukegan Township. And as you show that, there's eight other school districts in the city of Waukegan. I don't think people know that. There's eight.
Yeah, I didn't notice that many.
Depending on what township you are in, that percentages are going to be a little bit different. Could you, at the next meeting, just give me a breakdown of, by township? I used to have it, but I can't find it anymore, of the breakdown of the townships and what the taxing bodies. And I could call up people in other townships and get their tax bill, but you probably can figure it out quicker than I can. Because I think Waukegan Township is different than, what township are you in?
I'm in Libertyville Township.
That's a different township.
And then Warren Township.
I'm in Warren.
That's a different, that's a little bit, there's a little difference.
I have, I have residents that are in Zion Beach Park.
There's a difference in each one of those that needs to be, that needs to be shown. We just have the example of Waukegan Township, obviously, because that's Waukegan proper. Most of us, I shouldn't say most of us, but live in Waukegan proper. So I'd like to have a breakdown of all the other townships, because it is a little different for each township. And that's not decided by us. Okay, sorry about that.
Roll call please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton. Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item M was held over to the next council meeting. Item N, can I have a motion?
No move.
Alderman, okay, Alderman Mozzio, second by Alderman Florian. Alderman Bolton, you had a question about this?
I did, I had a question, yes. Could you reiterate, what is the reason for our constituents, for the amendment, you know, the provision?
Because right now in our code, it says we can't have a casino. So if we are having a casino, when we've gone this far and voted for it, we need to have our ordinances match that we can actually have a casino.
So it's to match?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Which is what you're voting on.
Thank you so much.
Any other? Yeah, liquors on this too, so that they, that's part of the thing, so that they can get a liquor license for the casino. Any other questions to item N?
Is, so is this, does this ordinance include that Class Q liquor license?
Yes, yes.
I had a couple of questions about that. I didn't realize that when we were in committee, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I thought we were maybe holding it over. So one of the questions I have is, a lot of this talks about selling liquor in, you know, obviously in the casino and where it's, you know, going to be sold and so on. Oftentimes in casinos, they give away free alcohol. Are they allowed to do that at this?
May I?
Yep.
So my understanding is, in Illinois, you cannot give it away free while you're at the tables gambling, so you have to actually go up to the bar and purchase your drink at that, or you have to go up to the bar to get a free comp drink, but if you're at the tables, you have to purchase it.
Say that again?
So if you're at the gambling tables or you're at the machines, you cannot be comped a free drink-
Okay.
While sitting there. You have to go up to the bar and get it. But if you're at the bar, you could be comped the drink.
So, that's weird. Okay. And I know they talked about carrying it back and forth between the places and stuff like that. There was one other thing I wanted to know. Yeah, because it talks about alcohol is purchased, so I just wanted to clarify that free.
So there's a Q liquor license for the casino, and then when restaurants go in, there will be a separate license for those?
So this is, this license is being given to a corporation in essence, right? Not to an individual? So-
It's all state statute, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So when, when we give a regular liquor license, we go through that whole process of looking at, you know, has the person had a DUI, you know? How do we do that with a corporation? Like, how do we hold them to some kind of?
Same way you do with Chili's or any other, yeah.
Okay, I guess that's true.
It's the same, same way as any restaurant would be. They have the same-
Any chain restaurant would be the same way.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions to this? Okay, roll call please, Madam Clerk. Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio. Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that being the completion of the agenda and there being no ordinances, Alderman time. Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I want to thank all those people that are here today. It's nice to see the audience full, and especially our special guests, like Senator Johnson and the people from CLC. Thank you for being here to watch the show that is the Waukegan City Council. I just have a couple of things. I was at Art Walk on Saturday. It was really cold, and I made it to a few places, but I drove all the way through downtown at one point, and it was just awesome to see so many people downtown. There was life and energy and a show at the Genesee, and the restaurants were full, and the parking spaces were full. It was, it was really awesome. I hope we can keep doing that every, every night, every weekend, as much as possible. This morning, we turned in our petitions for election, for the election coming up, and I'm just hoping that we can somehow make it when the, the people who are running his independence file next month. It was very cold out there this morning, and the building was open. There were people, or it wasn't open, the building was, there were people in the building, there were, but we were forced to stand outside and wait in the cold while we could have been inside. And so I'm hoping that next month-
7:45. It was opened at 7:45.
Right, but people-
Before City Hall opened.
People in, people were in line much earlier than that, and it just would, it just would be nice if we allowed people to stand inside, considering it's winter. This is a hard enough slog in this campaign to have to campaign in January and February, so it would just be nice if we could be nice to the people and let them stand inside where it's warm, in my opinion. So, thank you.
Alderman Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just on the topic of city manager, I spoke during the Code Revisions, Appeals and Negotiations Committee. I'm not going to reiterate everything that I said during that time period, but I will just state that the movement to a different form of government, a city management form of government is, it's very serious and it's very ambitious, and the people of Waukegan deserve to vote on whether we will move to that form of government or not. It should not be decided by just us up here, so I would encourage everybody to vote in favor of putting it on the ballot. And also, I just want to remind everybody of comments that were made several months ago, where anybody who was against voting for a city administrator based that rejection of the proposed city administrator almost solely on the basis that it should be put to a referendum. So now's your opportunity to honor what it is you said and the representations that you made, not only to us Aldermen, but also to the residents of the city of Waukegan, and vote yes to put the city manager on the ballot. So I will again reiterate this point at the next meeting, but I just want to remind everybody of their obligations to give the people a voice and to give them an opportunity to vote. I will say, while it's serious and it's ambitious, it's not terribly progressive or forward-thinking, because cities have been adopting this since 1914. A majority of the cities in the city, or, excuse me, in the state of Illinois that have a city manager in place did so between 1950 and 1970. So for a city of progress, we are terribly, terribly behind the times.
We are.
So again, educate yourself, talk to anybody you need to talk to, call me. I'm happy to have a dialogue about it. It's not a me trying to convince you, it's just a discussion. But it needs to be had, and when it comes time to vote, I don't want to hear anybody say that they didn't have an opportunity to talk to their constituents or try to educate people, because we've been talking about this for months. The mayor ran on it. It has been top of mind, and it has been at the top of the discussion now for quite some time. On a separate note, I, thank you, I hope that everybody has a wonderful and safe Thanksgiving, and I truly hope that you get to spend it with family or friends, and get, you know, just get to have a nice time and have a day off. Thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I want to acknowledge Josephine Blanks for her community service and her spirit of excellence. And I remember years ago when I had a business downtown in Waukegan. She was one of, a partnership of mine, a vendor in my store. So she has been known to do excellent work, so congratulations to her again. And then I want to acknowledge the College of Lake County for their presentation. Thank you so much. I look forward to the improvement that you're going to provide academically for the city of Waukegan and continue to reiterate, you know, the change to come. And then I want to give a shout out to a couple of police officers that answered to an emergency call. I'm going to try to pronounce his name. Egali Ananos and Officer Connor. Of course, I have many emergencies, but these two officers really answered immediately to a particular individual that was attacked, and quite a few officers, and paramedics to show up. So, you know, every now and then we have to acknowledge their efforts. And then I want to give a shout out to the AME Church, who fed the community to those, just free food, free dinner. It was excellent. I mean, they had turkey and dressing and macaroni and cheese, and we delivered those meals. It was just an awesome event. And then don't forget to, if the opportunity is still available, to fill out the CBDG grant for small business owners. Thank you so much.
Alderman Seager.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for being with us tonight, and I want to wish all of you a very enjoyable Thanksgiving and holidays. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mozzio. Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, I'd like to recognize Senator Adrian Johnson for really being here in Waukegan a lot, making sure that we get our fair share. We really appreciate what you've done since being appointed and now being elected to the office. You have done an excellent job, and we want to make sure that you continue to do the excellent job that you have been doing. My next comment is that Alderman Seager and I came and viewed the CLC building, and Mayor, what I like to be able to do is that we need to get together and find out, you know, what's the stopping points. I know that there are some concerns. I went down to Chicago with the group, saw the marketplace, the farming system, but I think that we need to come together and have a meeting to find out, how do we work together to make this happen? Because we're in a food desert on this side. And so we need to, you know, come together and say, here's what we need, here's what you need. We need to work on that, because I think it could be a win-win. I know that there are some issues, and I've heard both sides, but I'm saying right now, it's in the fourth ward, and we need to try to make something happen that is going to be equitable to the city as well as the college. So I'd like for us to look at that. Also, I want to point out that certainly with young people needing coats, socks, boots, anytime that we can help the young people, we need to do that. So there's a lot of different groups out there asking for our donations, and we try to do what we can. Also, Mayor, I know that on Washington Street, you know, I was going down Washington on Friday, and for whatever reason, it was so packed. Now, I was not aware that the facility on the south side was given a permit, because I know that in the other administration, they were denied. But apparently, both sides of the street are packed, you know, at the wing and the other place. You know, we wouldn't let anyone use that center section, but apparently they're using it now.
I have no idea what you're talking about. Can you give me an address, or, I mean?
I'll get you the information, but apparently, I went by there and I saw that that section was being used where we had stopped it before, but I will get you the address. I want us to look into that, to see what is really going on in that particular facility. And it's right there, well, okay, it's, it's on the south side. It was where the, we had an incident there. They would not let us look at the cameras and things like that when you were the Alderman.
I have no-
But I'll get you the address tomorrow, so that we can look at that situation. I'm concerned about that. Also, in the fourth ward, I will get information to you regarding a meeting so that we can discuss this city manager situation and go from there. Thank you. Everyone have a happy Thanksgiving and a safe one.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Chris for really working with me and Chief of Staff Bridges with this leaf pickup. There has been issues, issues, issues in my ward regarding getting my leaves picked up. We started in October. I think our first leaf pickup was the 26th, and I had several residents as of last week that hadn't even had their leaves picked up the first time, and they had had their leaves out. So I know that I have made several calls, especially when they were supposed to be in the fifth ward. And I believe they're supposed to be in the fifth ward today, the 21st, and then they're supposed to be in there Friday or whenever. But now that we have snow on the ground, I mean, I think probably some of them are frozen. And some of the workers were telling some of my residents that there was a new system this year. And I know in the past, there has been three staff or three crews on the trucks. One driving, one raking, and one vacuuming up the leaves. This year, there's only a driver and a person that's vacuuming the leaves. And if they are far away from the curb, they are only picking up the leaves that are closest to the curb and leaving the remainder there. So I know that next year, I talked to the chief, we got to do something different with the leaf pickup. I know that some of my residents were saying that they had some problems last year. I was not aware of it, but I do know that we had a three-person crew last year, so I don't know what the situation was. But next year, we got to come up with a different system as far as getting the leaves picked up. I don't know what we're going to do. Have the month, whole month of October and November to have the residents bag their own leaves, and we pick them up for a month or two months, free of charge or something. We got to do something, because if we put out a schedule for the leaf pickup, the residents are banking on them to be picking up their leaves when they say that they're going to pick them up. Not two weeks later, not three weeks later, and so on and so forth. So we got to do a better job. If they're going to come out with a schedule and work with the city, they got to do a better job working with the city to make sure those leaves are picked up. So I appreciate you all working with me when I call- So I appreciate you all working with me when I call in and trying to get them picked up. I really appreciate it, and the residents appreciate it as well. Uh, to Senator Johnson, too, I echo Alderman Kirkwood's words. You're always present in this community, and, and I, I don't know when you have time to go to the other communities, but you're always present here, and we're thankful for that. And President Sutick and the staff at, uh, CLC, you've done an excellent job, uh, with the Student Center downtown. Looking forward to the opening, the grant opening. I've had tours, couple of tours through there, uh, and the, uh, building is beautiful. I'm looking forward to the opening, and thank you for coming and allowing the community to get involved and bring their talents and gifts to go on display at, uh, the CLC. And, uh, wanna wish everyone, uh, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, in the sixth ward, and I wanna kinda pick up, um, where Alderman Newsome and her, uh, comments regards to leaf pickup. It, it's, this, this whole, uh, leaf pickup evolution this winter, this, this season is, is not gone as we had, uh, planned and anticipated.
Can I have Chris come up and talk? Because maybe he can address those issues right now so that the residents understand. Is that okay, or, and then you can...
I'd like to finish my comments.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So, um, the, the issue was evolved with the leaf pickup in that the vendor, Waste Management, did not have the staff as, as, um, Alderman Newsome alluded to. They just, they had one guy driving, one dri, one guy working the, the vacuum. Also, we had about, you know, I know in the sixth ward, we had over 90% of leaves, it seemed, had, had come down. So it was just an overwhelming amount of leaves on the ground, and residents couldn't get all the leaves to the curb. So it was spread out across the parkway, and that vacuum only reaches about three feet over, right? So a lot of, a lot of leaves were left, and then without the, the appropriate level of staffing, uh, it was just a disaster. A lot, there was a lot of fallacies, uh, failures, and, and there was also some communication issues, um, with the guys on the trucks. Uh, Chris and I were in near constant communication. He's talking to Waste Management, I talked to him a couple of times. But the bottom line is, uh, Waste Management is definitely aware, we made them aware, that there were problems, and they're, and we're not satisfied, that our residents are not happy. I'm not happy, nobody's happy about it. So they're aware of that, and as we stand, uh, where we stand today, um, Waste Management continues their efforts in the sixth ward. Now, they're, they're three weeks behind schedule, but they're continuing through the sixth ward, uh, as best they can, and they will move on throughout the rest of the city, right? They will be coming back through again, another pass through the city. So if, if you've got leaves that are still on the parkway, get them over to the curb for the next pass through. We don't know when that's gonna be, and we don't know what the weather's gonna be, but, but this is the best we have. Chris, do you wanna add anything to that?
Yes, and, um, just as you, just as you said, and just to reassure you, in our briefing on Friday, they did say that they will be back around and they will be picking up the leaves. Um, they have other communities that they pick up leaves for, so as they go through those communities and they do a clean sweep through them, they're gonna come through us next, so...
They'll be, they'll be reallocating some of those, those human resources and people, they'll bring their people from over there to...
Exactly, yes. So I brief with them every day.
Cool, thank you, sir.
So one of the problems they had was that they could not hire enough people to do raking. So that's why they were only picking up the first 18 inches, um, because they had that, they were lacking that third person to rake. Um, like many companies right now, finding people to work is always an issue. Um, we also have a backup plan if that, if this is not resolved, um, we have a backup plan to get those leaves. But we want to try and have Waste Management do it first because they have the contract, so...
That's correct, thank you, Mayor, thank you.
I also wanna remind people that, um, you know, some residents have said, oh, just get rid of Waste Management. Well, if any of you have looked at garbage disposal places, they are becoming a monopoly. It is very hard to find alternate management companies that will take on a city this size. So, um, they bought advanced, they did.
Everything.
They bought up advanced disposal, they bought up a number of other...
Waukegan guy run the shop, Roger Felk, when he had the phone call away, anytime we had a problem, but...
Yep.
The guy bought out, he left.
Yep.
I, I talked to him, he said, Greg, Waste Management doesn't care. You guys are a flea on an island. It used to be we were the biggest account around.
Right.
But he's, he said, you're a flea on an island, now he doesn't care.
And smaller companies will not take us on.
Yeah, they don't have the bandwidth, they don't have the resources.
So, um, we are working around this the best we can. Like I said, we have, you know, we don't have control of how companies merge, and we're working around this the best we can. And again, I wanna say, we have been in constant contact with them. Um, it's not like we're ignoring it, but it is a little bit of an issue when you're dealing with a large company. Um, residents have also complained, it's just hard to get through, um, for them to answer phones. They, you know, it's, it's a process we're working through, and again, it's something that has changed in the, um, Waste Management, um, arena, that they are becoming larger and larger monopolies of things, and we don't have the control that we used to. But again, thank you, Chris, for working through this and keeping us informed of this and the Aldermen.
Thank you.
Is that it, Alderman Turner?
No, I'm waiting for my, when do, when do I get to go? No, you, you, you guys interjected, you kinda took over my time, I'm waiting for you to finish, so, thank you. Uh, so, yeah, obviously, I was getting a lot of calls and emails and communications from residents about that, and I have a, a policy, a commitment to return and, and respond to every communication. If I missed, if I didn't respond to anyone, um, it wasn't intentional, and, and I apologize. All right, so also in the sixth ward, you know, there's been, um, you know, heating bills are going up, it's costing a lot more to heat our homes. We've already had some very cold weather, we anticipate a very cold winter. So in, in the sixth ward, if you're struggling with the heating bill, I may be able to help you. I need a phone call, no texts, no emails, I need to talk with you. If you need help with your heating bill, call me at 847-445-3788. And we'll see what I, what I can do. Um, also, we, in the not-too-distant past, hired a number of, uh, parking enforcement officers, that, is that what we're calling them? Community services? Community services, s, community service officers who are doing parking enforcement. And to that end, we've seen, uh, they're, they're being effective and efficient, right? They're writing a number of parking tickets, and, and, and one of the ordinances that they're being effective and efficient in enforcing is the alternate parking ordinances. Um, however, I've been getting, uh, numerous complaints about, um, people being ticketed during the daytime. So I'll remind you again, alternate parking is in effect year-round from midnight until noon. Uh, the complaints that I'm getting are people were being ticketed at 7:30 in the morning, 10:30, 11 o'clock, they come home for lunch, they're in the house for half an hour, 45 minutes, come out, and they've gotten a ticket on their car. I, I can't do anything about that, but what I, I will do, uh, for my neighbors in the sixth ward, starting now through end of year, if you get a alternate parking ticker, ticket between 6:30 a.m. and noon, I'll help you out with one of them, the first one. After that, you're on your own, okay? And again, I'd appreciate a phone call, but I'll take texts on that too, all right? Um, I think that's all I have, thank you all very much, have a happy Thanksgiving, we'll see you in the neighborhood.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, uh, first of all, I wanna thank, uh, Senator Adrian Johnson, um, for attending our meeting and for such a, a strong presence within our community. Thank you very much, as our, as my colleagues have indicated. Um, and I also wanna thank CLC for all you do within our community, thank you. Um, condolences to all the Waukegan families who have lost a loved one, um, within the last couple of weeks. And, um, um, leaves are very important within our community, as you can see. So I won't belabor the process of complaining regarding the pickup, but, uh, the seventh ward has also been missed several times. And I, and I will, you know, um, sit down and wait, um, for the crews to come around the second and third time around. Um, but, but thank you, Chris, for everything that Public Works does, um, for backing us up. And, uh, with that, uh, happy Thanksgiving to all, God bless, and, um...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Whoop, 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 whoop. Hold on, hold on.
I apologize really quickly, earlier, I believe I misspoke about, uh, the liquor at the casino, at the tables, you cannot be comped. I don't believe you can be comped at the bar either, but Stuart Weiss, my colleague who's been working on this, can render an opinion to the council tomorrow. I just, um, I wanted to make that clarification, it's been a long day, I apologize for misspeaking.
And just a public service for... Okay, and while he's walking over there, just a public service for those filing in three weeks on the independent. They, we will make arrangements to be open at 7:45 a.m., and before, 15 minutes before City Hall opens to accommodate those. And if it's too cold, they can stay in the car and just walk up the two minutes before. We'll be real good.
Hi, Carl Camalucci, Taft Law Firm, uh, representing Full House. That's correct, uh, in Illinois, casinos are not allowed to comp drinks in any area of the premises.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Just to clarify, yeah.
What about ice cream, you gonna comp some, uh, some ice cream?
Uh, I think food is the thing that, uh, that they, that they comp, yeah. Thank you very much.
No.
Everyone.